Thanks, Kristen. Good evening, everyone. Welcome council, staff, residents and our delegation. This is the meeting for the municipality of Marmar and Lake for Tuesday, November the 4th, 2025, and we're being streamed live. So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:32 with the land acknowledgement. We are meeting today on the traditional territory of many nations, including the Huron, Windat, Anishinaabe, and the Hudonosone peoples. We acknowledge our shared obligation to respect, honor, and sustain these lands and the natural resources contained within. We honor their cultures and celebrate their commitment to this land. We would also like to acknowledge the Mohawk and Algonquin nations whose traditional and unceded territory we are gathered upon today. Hastings County is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations, Métis, and Amulet people. I need a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmar and Lake for Tuesday, November the 4th, 2025. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Mike and Eric? All in favor? It's carried. I guess I don't need to ask that tonight. Thank you. Is there any declaration of any area interest? Being none. Next is the mayor's report. October the 21st was the regular meeting of Marmar and Lake Council. October 22nd, I chaired the regular meeting of the Southeast Health Forum in Kingston. This was a very important meeting as it resulted in a unanimous vote of the board to set the formula for municipal harmonization of the three merged boards that there is equal contribution based on the capita population. October 23rd, I attended a meeting of the doctor recruitment committee. John Nicholas, Hastings County, provided an update on his attendance on recruitment job fairs for the county and discussions with several interested candidates. He reported that this area is attractive to prospective doctors who need to work in rural communities. This area is considered rural, but it is not remote, and there is a desirable recreation component and cash incentives. October the 24th, I attended the office to meet with the C A O and sign documents. October the 29th, I participated in leadership training orientation program provided by the Ministry of Health and the University of Toronto for training and development for the Southeast Board of Health members, particularly the Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair of the Government's Committee. October the 30th, I attended Hastings County Council. Alto representatives made a delegation to County Council, and they are here tonight as a delegation to explain and promote high-speed rail service between Toronto and Quebec City. And today is November the 4th, and it's our regular Marmar and Lake Council meeting. Thank you. Next is our delegation, and I welcome Alexis Doyle. And it's regarding the Alto High Speed Rail project, so I'll just ask you to proceed, Alexis, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for having us tonight. I say us because I'm here with you in person, but I also have my colleague Daphne Ertabiz, who is with our technical team and available to answer any technical questions you may have this evening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And I also want to extend my thank you and gratitude to John Connelly for having set up this opportunity. He reached out to learn more about the project and connect with our team, and then invited us, recognizing the importance of this project to the community. So thank you also for setting this up. Alto is a federal crown corporation, leading the high-speed passenger rail project that will bring 60% of Canada's population closer together. I do have slides. I don't know if, yeah, that's okay. That's perfect. Beautiful. Okay, great. So go look at the next slide. Where I'll just zero in on some specific challenges that the project aims to address. So our project will help improve productivity throughout the Toronto-to-Quebec City corridor and the surrounding areas by addressing travel costs through increased fuel and car maintenance, as well as costs for infrastructure maintenance. We'll also alleviate the congestion on major highways and in airports by providing an alternative means to get from one point to another and bring disconnected communities closer together through a convenient mode of transportation that reduces greenhouse gas emissions and improves one's quality of life through enhanced passenger experience. That's nice. Boats, another mode of transportation. Oh, okay. Okay. No problem. The project will run on 1,000 kilometers of dedicated electrified track. Our service will be fast, reliable, and frequent, reaching speeds of over 300 kilometers an hour. We will reduce travel times throughout the Toronto-to-Quebec City corridor. And given the specific design requirements for this technology, we will need new dedicated track to move people only, which has its benefit in increased reliability to ensure trains arrive on time and bring you where you expect to be according to your schedule. And we will also target frequent departures with 20 to 30 trains daily that would enable convenient options that can accommodate for flexible travel schedules. On the next slide, I just want to highlight the seven-station areas along the corridor. This is Toronto, Peterborough, Ottawa, Laval, Montreal, Corrigan, and Quebec City. Now, I just want to highlight that these are points on a map because we have not yet determined the alignment and how we will get from one station area to another. But in the coming months, we plan to share a corridor concept that will identify the boundaries within which we will identify that alignment option. So we will refine that down through a series of technical analysis that includes safety, design, environmental, and social considerations over the coming years. And just highlighting some of the travel times that we are anticipating, passengers will be able to get from downtown Toronto to downtown Montreal in just three hours. And those in the Peterborough and surrounding areas can expect commute times of 40 minutes. From an economic perspective, the stretch along Southern Ontario into Quebec is already a hub of economic and social activity. The high-speed rail is projected to increase Canada's GDP by 1.1%, equivalent to $24 to $35 billion through increased productivity with cities being brought closer together, higher participation in the workforce, and increased tourism. And this project is also going to strengthen the Canadian economy by sourcing goods and services right here. We will need substantial volumes of steel and aluminum for our track, and we will also need the people to build it. We are expecting the project to generate over 50,000 jobs over the construction period. And on this next slide, I just want to highlight a few of the other outcomes for the project, which include safe travel between cities. I know, and we know that Highway 7 is a very dangerous route. And so this is an opportunity to ensure that people are able to get from Peterborough to Ottawa in a safer manner. We also see this as being a project that will meaningfully contribute to reconciliation with Indigenous peoples with whom Alto has been engaging for several years. And another point that I just want to highlight is the increased availability of accessible and affordable services. Just earlier today, I had an opportunity to speak to the city of Coeur d'Alene Lakes, and they highlighted how many of their seniors' population access important services in the Toronto area from a healthcare perspective. And they see that this will be an opportunity to better service and support that demographic within their community. Now, Alto is not doing this alone. We are working closely with our partner Cadence, who was identified through a rigorous RFP process launched by Transport Canada in 2023. This process closed in February of this last year, where then Prime Minister Trudeau announced that Alto would work with Cadence, which is a consortium of rail infrastructure companies based both here in Canada as well as in France with expertise delivering transportation projects and high-speed rail on a global scale. Over the next four years, we will be identifying the corridor, the exact alignment, select station locations, complete the regulatory process, acquire the land, and finalize the engineering design. And that's in the development phase. And you can see where we are here is just at the beginning of these four years. At the end of the development, Alto and Cadence will present the cost and timeline for a shovel-ready project and present it to the federal government for approval, after which we will move into construction. And on this next slide, I just want to highlight the importance of engagement over these next four years. So there's a lot of, there's a tremendous amount of technical work that is to be accomplished, but we'll also be engaging closely with our key stakeholders, with Indigenous communities, as well as the general public to advance the project over this development phase. Now, we are aware that there are many communities that don't see themselves in this project, especially those who are not supported with one of the seven stations. Recognizing this, Alto is in the initial stages of creating a community benefits plan that will create sustained measurable benefits for impacted communities along the project corridor. We are just in the early stages of this program, and the vision includes a focus on economic opportunities through employment and procurement with local businesses. I want to share our plans in the coming months. So Alto will launch a comprehensive engagement process, and we will offer several open houses with virtual information sessions and an online platform that will focus on educating the public on high-speed rail and give participants the opportunity to share key insights that will help inform the project decision-making process. As the dates are confirmed, we will be posting our open house schedule, and we will reach out directly to staff to share these dates for these upcoming events so that the public can learn more. And underpinning our engagement here at Alto, our principles that ensure that we have open, transparent communications that reflect the local needs across the corridor and that we develop an inclusive and collaborative approach. I'll just close out by again emphasizing that the priority right now in this month and as we lead into the engagement process that we launch in January is to build awareness of this project and to share information, especially with municipalities along the corridor and the representatives of those communities. So thank you again for having us today and for the opportunity to share this project overview and highlight some of our upcoming activities within your communities.
Thank you very much, Alexis and Daphne. Anyone have any questions regarding the delegation? Eric?
Sure. Thank you very much for your presentation. I understand this project is still really in the early phases, so I'll take that into consideration kind of in the questions and expected answers. Part of the challenge, I think, with this project taking place over such a large part of Canada and passing through so many different communities is kind of the not-in-my-backyard attitude. Can you detail any of the engagement strategies that you're going to be taking with the communities to get those communities on board like ours?
I think this is one of those steps, right? Building these relationships early, making sure that we're having conversations and sharing an overview of this project in these early stages. This is actually a key learning from previous projects. We deliberately shared a map where we have points on the map and not the corridor and a line between those points. Because in the past, when you share decisions that have already been made without informing and sharing the benefits, educating on the project, understanding the why and the how, then you'll definitely get people who have their backs up and are concerned about the fact that it is going right here, quote, "close to their homes." So that's part of the approach and our strategy is, I wouldn't say it's a strategy, but it is making sure that we are sharing project information in these early stages and keeping people informed along the way in the process as well. Not only are we offering the open houses, but we'll also host a number of roundtables, many of which will be in rural communities to help understand some of those opportunities, but also the concerns and the questions from community members so that we can begin to understand some potential mitigation approaches for this project.
Okay, thank you. And when you get into this part of the province, the route will undoubtedly have to pass through likely some conservation areas and protected lands. Can you explain that as part of the project when you have a train moving at that kind of speed, 300 kilometers an hour, through possible conservation land?
I'm not sure I fully understand your question. You're saying, like, what are some mitigation approaches? Or what are some considerations we have to take into account if we were to build it through?
Both of those.
And so we are working closely with conservation authorities throughout the province to help understand areas of note when it comes to the environment. But in terms of what the specific design parameters are, the regulatory process will help us identify the mitigation opportunities. We will be expected to present those mitigations to the regulator, which is the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada. We are also identified as a major project, and so our regulatory process will be shortened, but we aren't cutting corners when it comes to the environment. I don't know if Daphne has more to share. I know Daphne is joining us from the Technical Engineering Design Team, not necessarily in the Environmental Team, but is there anything, Daphne, you'd like to highlight or?
But if your question is around safety and security, that means that our entire right-of-way will be fenced, so to ensure the protection of animals and humans. And part of the mitigation is also making sure that we can have ways and to have accesses for the wildlife, as well as farmers and residents along the corridor.
Thank you. Anything else? Mike, did you have it? Go ahead.
I know you don't have any routes and you don't have any lines drawn on there, but via rail at one time was going to revive the old rail beds through Peterborough and south of Marmara and Havlock and on to Ottawa. From there, are you planning on using that type of area more along the Highway 7 corridor? Or are we going to see it mostly along the 401 corridor through Kingston, Brockville, Cornwall, and that where the existing CPNC enrails, which seem to be fighting with each other every day for freight or passengers, whichever is on that rail line down there? So do you have any idea where you're going to be going? And the other question after that is electricity, power. We don't have enough right now, so is there anything that can be done? We do have a vested interest in that and that we have a what do you call it?
Pump storage.
The pump storage, right. Opportunity here in Marmara to fill in the gaps on a lot of one-time usage, I guess, during the day, during the busy part of the day. So we're interested in anything to do with Ontario Hydro and that. So just the corridor and where are we going to get the electricity?
I see Daphne off mute. I wonder if she wants to answer the first part, and then I could highlight her.
We're looking at Daphne because she's the only one we can see.
Well, for the alignment, the final road through from Peterborough to Ottawa, we're evaluating all kinds of options. So the routes you named are part of our thinking. So what we're waiting is the potential routes on a, you know, multi-assessment criteria. So we're looking at things like, of course, the technical feasibility, the impact on the environment, the impact on communities. We're looking at the cost. We're looking at also the feedback from the communities. Alexis highlighted the open house that we'll be having. Well, this is where we want to hear from the communities, you know, what are the best possible approaches in each of the areas? And then based on that, you know, we'll compute all of this information and then have the idea of what is the best possible route for our train. So this is kind of the approach. That's why we don't have the route. We're optioneering at this point, and the input of the community is a very important part of our analysis at this point. So that's for the corridor assessment and alignment that you mentioned. For the hydro question, of course, we're engaging with Hydro Ontario, Hydro Quebec. We're looking at scoping, evaluating the capacity we'll need, and then how it's going to be delivered. And we expect that it might involve some, you know, specific build on each side of the border. Provincial border, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe I'll just, in addition to Hydro 1, we've already begun conversations for I S O as well, just to your point around, do we have enough power? Where's the power going to come from? And I do appreciate you highlighting the pump storage that came up in conversation with your C A O as well. And we, at this time, I don't know whether or not we're scoping to resource specific power generation to the project necessarily, but we are certainly doing the early-stage engagement to make sure that there is enough capacity on the grid to accommodate the power needs for our project based on future projections of general growth in the province.
I think we fully realize that our pump storage is not designed to supply hydro to high-speed trains that needs it in a constant supply. But we can supply electricity to the province of Ontario that other forms of electricity can then be used to supply the train. So we can fill in the gaps. You know, you don't have to buy groceries with all your money. You can buy some gasoline too. So, you know, and that's sort of what we want to do. We want to supply some of the gasoline so that you can get to buy the groceries. But, yeah, okay. Thank you. Be nice to see you. Somebody wanted to run right through Marmara, but I don't think that's going to work out real well.
Thanks, Mike. Eric, did I see you?
Yeah, sorry. I just had one more question slash comment. Again, I understand this is in the early phases. I definitely see the benefit side of this to residents and community members here to give them access to those bigger centers and reliable transportation. You know, and you'll obviously through community engagement, the consultations, you'll cover a lot of this. You touched on Highway 7, you know, having a lot of traffic and being a dangerous highway in your engagement in those community benefit agreements that you're making. I would just have you keep in mind that places like us that are on Highway 7, our businesses, our small businesses, our community, we rely on that traffic. It's very important here. So while, yes, there's an opportunity to take traffic off Highway 7, that's and part of the lifeblood to our small businesses because that traffic exists.
Appreciate you sharing that perspective or a different perspective to what we often see as congestion or challenges. I do want to reiterate the piece around the tourism opportunities that we see part of that economic uplift of the 1.1% GDP to come from tourism. And we think about that through the perspective of bringing people to the Peterborough and surrounding areas where people would then access the services and the outdoors and the recreational areas that includes Marmara. So I think, I appreciate that concern around it may be drawing people away from Highway 7 over time, but it also has an opportunity to draw.
Thank you. I just have one question. I know it's provincial, but this would require this to the, in the initial phases, environmental assessment?
Excellent question. So we are not subject to the provincial level, sorry, the provincial level regulatory processes in either provinces. Because we are a federal project, we are subject to the impact assessment through the Act. So that's the regulatory process we would follow.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Being nothing, well, I thank you again for your delegation, and I'm sure we'll be in contact going forward. And please reach out to us, to staff, you know, or our council, if there's anything that we can sort of help you with as you're going through your planning process. We'd like to be part of the planning process because, to Eric's point, you know, this communication corridor, I guess you could say, transportation corridor is vital to our small towns along the way. So we would appreciate being part of the development process. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, do we need, we don't need a motion, do we, Kristen? Next is the adoption of the amendments of the regular meeting of council for the municipality of Marmar and Lake for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Can I get a mover and a seconder? Eric and Mike? All in favor? That's carried. Thanks, Alexis. Next, our staff reports. Kayla, manager of environmental services regarding the municipal drinking water rate study and financial plan. And the recommendation is the council received this financial plan for municipal drinking water license renewal report dated November the 4th, 2025, that council authorized the manager of environmental services to hire Hampson Consulting, L P D, limited to undertake a rate study and complete the financial plan for the municipality's water system. Further, the council pre-approved the related expenditure of $25,400 to be included in the 2026 capital budget. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Eric, Mike? Any questions or discussions? And welcome, Kayla. I see you're online. Go ahead, Mike.
I do believe Hampson is doing your asset management plan too. I find their price pretty steep considering that they're doing the asset management plan already in their timelines to do what they want to do. I just find it's a very expensive rate study, seeing as they have all the information already, and we're paying them to do three-quarters of that work through the other one. Do you know how they relate to other people? Think you froze.
Yeah, we're not hearing you, Kayla. Are you there? Can you?
Can you hear me?
You're breaking up. We can hear you, but you're breaking up.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm hoping that they'll be able to get it done on a quicker timeline, but yeah, it is a costly adventure for sure. Unfortunately, it is something that we are required to do to renew our licenses.
Yeah, I know, and that's part of my point. We have to do it. So I think, how has our relationship been with Hampson? I find that engineers' prices tend to creep up as the more work they do for you, you get more comfortable with them, and they just... I'm not a happy engineering-type person to begin with.
Yeah. You're correct. They do, we do have an excellent relationship with them. They've been, they did our last financial plan as well, and they are doing our asset management plan. So they do know our system the best. So I thought they would be the most efficient to move forward with, since we're on a tight timeline. Everything needs to be approved and submitted by March 16th.
Thanks, Kayla. John, you wanted to offer?
Through your chair to the deputy. There are really only a few bigger brokers in terms of organizations that could do it. It's typically either Watson or Hampson are the two leading organizations. And albeit there's some synchronicity and continuity by having them do the asset manager plan plus do this work, notwithstanding that it's probably better to have Hampson and be able to meet this accelerated timeline. It's something that probably certainly before Kayla's time should have been anticipated, and perhaps we would have had a little bit more time to go forward. But really, it would have ended up as either Hampson or Watson. That said, uncomfortable with recommending that Hampson, because they know the organization, they know the work, it's got to be done in a short timeframe, and also we can't run... run the risk of having the uh, the system shut down. It's just something that's there and the, the deputy's points are well taken. Um, but that said, it's probably something that should have been identified in the earlier budget, certainly before Kayla's time, but under the previous management.
Thanks, John. Anything further?
Yeah, I I think going forward, we, 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 yes, get into these situations quicker and get a few more quotes from other people because it just seems to your point, you, you mentioned all the work they've been doing for us, but all that work is very similar to what they're going to do this time. So I could see a lot of this is just going to be cut and paste. And for twenty-four thousand, that's a lot of cut and paste. So I'm just not happy with their price and I would like to see us try next time we get somebody different or scout out different people because
Get some
Just not happy with that part.
I think is what you're saying. Okay, all in favor? Are you, okay, passed. Thank you. Um, committee and board reports. Thanks, Kayla. Um, Marmaroon Lake Public Library, minutes of September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Recommendation is that the foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards list that are received for information. I have a mover in the seconder. Eric, Mike? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, correspondence for direction, Central Hastings Support Network in the minutes of October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. And it's the recommendation that council accept the minutes for information. I have a mover in the seconder. Mike, Eric? Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and the recommendation is that council accept the news release for information. And I have a mover in the seconder. Eric, Mike? All in favor? That's carried. Um, request, road closure request for the Santa Claus parade for twenty twenty-five. And the recommendation is that council approve the request of the Marmarco Valley Lions Club to permit the Santa Claus parade to follow its usual route on Saturday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six P M at the fairgrounds. And that council direct the Lions Club to notify emergency services of all associated road closures. Further, that the Lions Club be required to provide the appropriate insurance certificate to staff prior to the event naming the municipality as an added insured. And I have a mover in the seconder. Eric? Second, Mike? Any discussion? Eric?
I just en- encourage all residents. It's fun to watch, but it's even more fun to be in it. Last year was an amazing turnout. So if you have a truck or a trailer or anything, um, certainly reach out to the Lions if you're interested in participating. It's a lot of fun.
And it was a blizzard last year. Anyway, um, anything else? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaws, uh, there are none. Notice of motion? Or um announcements? Um, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, sure. I just have a quick couple. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone in the community, uh, all the businesses and community groups uh who participated in Halloween and made that such a great uh event in the town for all the young children, despite the horrible weather. Uh, it was still pretty busy downtown and, and on all the side streets. Um, I'd like to remind the public this Saturday, November eighth, the Marmaroon Lake Public Library will show all the Marmaroon Lake entries into the Small Town Shorts Film Festival. They will be playing, uh, all eight of them at one P M in the William, William Shannon Room and be providing fresh popcorn. These are all short films that were produced by local residents uh of all ages. They did a great job on them. Uh, so if you missed your chance to see them at the Aaron Theater, uh, certainly make your way to the library on Saturday.
Thanks, Eric. And I'd just like to announce that Crescent Care is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary um in the town um on Friday, November the seventh, starting, I think it's one o'clock or one thirty. Um, so if any of the public or members of council would uh like to attend, that's happening on Friday. And I do have a certificate to present to them on, on Friday. Um, so there's no other announcements. Uh, I'll um ask for a motion that we go into closed session um at seven oh five P M under the Municipal Act two thousand and one, section two thirty-nine, two B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And it's regarding department updates and D, labor relations or employee negotiations and union, union update. B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees and K, opposition plan procedure criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or in behalf of the municipality or local board and regarding the fire department succession plan. So can I have a mover in the seconder to go into closed? Eric and Mike? All in favor? That's carried. John's just gone to lock the door.